Commission for Monday, February 24th, 2014, 7:00 PM. To order, and our first order of business is invocation led by Commissioner Nemeczek. Please rise.
I pray. We gather tonight as the Commission for the City of Gladstone. We ask that you give us insight to help us solve the problems to do the best for the citizens. Asking your name. Amen.
Amen. Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take the roll?
Mayor Mackey.
Here.
Commissioner Bastwick.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Nemeczek.
Here.
And Commissioner Mattin.
Is excused. Our next item of business is public comment. If there's anybody in the public who'd like to address the city commission, would you take the podium? Tell us your name and your address. Nope. Okay. We have a consent agenda tonight, which consists of the city commission regular meeting minutes of February 10, 2014, city commission budget workshop minutes February 11, and of February 12, the EDC regular minutes of December 10, 2013, DDA regular minutes of January 14, 2014, planning commission regular minutes of February 4, 2014, and the Gladstone EDC regular minutes of February 11, 2014, on our consent agenda. No bills? Oh.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Gay, supported by Commissioner Nemeczek to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion is carried. Public hearings, we have none tonight. Unfunded business, we have none, so we move to new business. And Darla has informed me she has several staff people who are sick tonight or otherwise unavailable because they have family members who are sick, so she's going to be handling the brunt of the business for us tonight. So, first item is the Gladstone Youth Wrestling Club's 5K run walk.
Yep. This is anytime somebody wants a run walk, they have an application that they fill out. So, the Gladstone Youth Wrestling Club has filled out the appropriate application. They're requesting a 5K run walk on Saturday, June 7th, from 8:30 to 11:00. The course map is outlined in your packet here tonight. No problems with staff. We recommend approval.
Questions in the commission?
I move approval of the wrestling club 5K run walk.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Nemeczek, supported by Commissioner Gay to approve the Gladstone Youth Wrestling Club 5K run walk. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried. Next item is to introduce zoning code amendment section 30, 509, site plan review.
This is something Planning Commission has been working on for a couple of months now, and I'm just going to read Renee's narrative here. I think it summarizes the whole intent of the introduction of this zoning code amendment here. So, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing February 4th at its regular meeting, specifically for the site plan review amendment. No public comment was noted during the meeting. The changes to the section are in red in your packet, but to summarize them, major changes noted will allow for an administrative approval for site plans required in certain zoning districts. Currently, any use in multifamily, business, or industrial districts are required to complete a site plan review process, which needs to be approved by the Planning Commission level. Business owners pay $200 to $300 for the service, and it requires a meeting with the Planning Commission. The proposed code will allow an administrative approval if the new use is consistent with zoning and no structural alterations are made to the structure. The fee for an administrative review would be $50, and will streamline the process for business owners. The administrative review will consist of completing an application and having the application reviewed by appropriate department heads. There are provisions that allow zoning administrators to call for a full site plan review should any adverse impacts be suspected. Perfect example of this is the Do2, when it closed under the Dew Drop and then it opened as the Do2. The Do2, you know, all those folks had to apply for a site plan. It went before Planning Commission, $200 bill, you know, no change in use. So, by doing this, the new restaurant that's going to be opening there, Happy Rock Cafe, same thing. So, that could be changed to a, you know, $50 bill, as long as they still fill out the application, and she can review it at her desk, you know, no alterations. That kind of seems like a no-brainer to me, but... So, the staff is recommending, you know, it's up to the commission if you want to hold another public hearing at the commission level. Planning Commission did already hold a public hearing on February 4th. If not, this is the introduction. It could be on the agenda March 10th for approval. The only thing is you can't introduce it and approve it on the same meeting, so...
Should I have any questions?
No, I think this is, I think this is, this is in reaction to some of the feedback that we've gotten from business owners in the public in regards to fees that they didn't feel were necessary for the service given in regards to zoning or whatever, and this only makes sense to me.
Not only fees, but the process.
The process. It streamlines the process.
Correct.
It alleviates...
And when you're trying to open a business, we want to be as convenient as possible.
Well, I think this is, commend staff for getting this done, and I think this is definitely reactive to what the community and the business owners were looking for, so...
Any other questions? I guess we have to decide whether we're going to hold a public hearing or whether we're going to put this on the agenda for our normal adoption at our next meeting.
Lowering fees and streamlining processes typically are not met with resistance. So, my opinion would be...
I would agree. I wouldn't see that we need to hold another public hearing since we've already held one. I would move that this be placed on the March 10th commission meeting for a vote at that point.
I support.
Motion by Commissioner Gay, supported by Commissioner Bastwick to not hold a public hearing but to place zoning code amendment section 30, 509, site plan review as recommended by the Planning Commission for our next regular meeting for adoption. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried. Next item, we have a resolution to accept the deficit elimination plan for the equipment fund. We heard a lot about the equipment fund at our budget hearing this year. I sat down with the city manager and the city treasurer in our auditor, and I think we're going to have a proposal to make a permanent fix to the equipment fund. This is a, I guess we'll call it a temporary fix.
Well, to assure that we're going to continue to get our money from the state of Michigan for Act 51, I think the sooner they get this resolution, you know, we'll continue to receive those checks uninterrupted. So, the city closed our equipment fund last year, 3/31/13, with a deficit of just over $154,000. So, the commission did already see this spreadsheet here, and they approved it November 25th. And my treasurer, Vicki Schrader, has been emailing back and forth with Department of Treasury, just clarification questions. And now, they don't, they approved the plan, but they need to see it in the form of a resolution, which needs your approval again, and then Kim will make it in this nice, pretty format, and we'll send that to the Department of Treasury.
That tells the state that we're not ignoring the problem that the equipment fund is running a deficit, and it is, that is quickly drawing down its assets to the point where it'll be in need of a major fix.
So, we're not asking for anything new, it's just...
Is there a, is there a resolution already written, or...
We took word for word what they had said in the email, which would be, you would approve, the plan is a five-year plan in which the following will be appropriated to eliminate the deficit by using general fund, $3,081.86, major street, local street funds, each of $2,157.30, solid waste fund, $6,780.09, electrical fund, $6,163.72, water and wastewater funds, each of $5,239.16. That is the wording that they want to see a motion in support to.
Now, when all is said and done, the equipment fund, I believe, is going to be rolled into our general fund as another activity, just like our Parks and Recreation, our public safety, the treasurer's office, the clerk's office, and I think the proposal you'll see will change this, but for right now, we need to adopt this deficit reduction plan so that the state knows we mean business, that we're not ignoring the problem.
I would move that we adopt the deficit reduction plan.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Nemeczek, supported by Commissioner Gay to adopt a resolution to accept the deficit elimination plan for the equipment fund. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried. Next item, our auditors and our staff noted there was a variance between our utility billing system software's receivables and our general ledger receivables, and so, after lots of investigation, you're coming up, you've got a recommendation to the city commission?
Yep. This is a write-up we've seen the last two years in our audit. The note by the auditor, we noted a variance in the utility billing, utility accounts receivable between utility billing system and the general ledger of approximately $50,000, with the general ledger being higher than that of the utility billing system. And the difference is in the electric fund portion, not water, wastewater, or solid waste. We told them we would investigate as much as we can. I think my staff has spent enough time looking for this. We truly feel, this is the same time that we changed...
I'm making noise. Good thing I shut my phone off.
We changed utility billing software, so it, we think it's a glitch in the system. The receipt, if we would have billed somebody incorrectly for their usage, they would have brought that to our attention, or we would have noted that. That hasn't happened. So, we feel the utility billing system is correct. Let's fix the error so we don't see it again. We only have one more month of this fiscal year. If we don't fix it now, we're going to see it again in our audit. So, looking for approval to make that correction on the general ledger.
Okay. Question? I move to allow staff to adjust accounts receivable.
I support it.
Motion by Commissioner Gay, supported by Commissioner Bastwick to approve the investigation by staff into the variance between the utility billing system receivable and the general ledger receivable. Utility billing system receivable will be the number we'll go with, and we'll have to correct the general ledger. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried. We had two budget hearings last week. Did anybody hear that? We went for quite a while with our staff. I thought the budget hearings went well. We got some significant decisions to make, of course, which we'll talk about at a public hearing, but tonight, we need to set a public hearing to take final action on the budget hearings that we had with our staff. I think I'll go to the commission first. If there's need for anything additional before the public hearing, please feel free to bring it up with myself or with the city manager now or in between our public hearing. I will be having a rather detailed memo that I'm going to send out to the commission based on my take of what happened at our budget hearings. And I know Darla and her staff spend an awful lot of time coming up with the budget and wrestling around a lot of different ideas, a lot of different things we need to consider doing, so I don't think that our public hearing for the budget is going to be an easy process. I think we're going to have to have a lot of comment among ourselves at the public hearing about where we're going forward, but that's my take without giving you the memo. I don't know if there's any other input from the commissioners that you have from the budget hearings that you'd like to kind of share with the public now or bring up for the rest of the commission? Darla?
I was just going to mention, like, maybe revenues and expenses per fund.
That's the analysis that I like.
So, in our general fund, the budget that staff and I are proposing, it's no secret, we have flat revenue. There is no new revenue in the general fund. The money that we're getting from the state of Michigan, it is what it is, and that's what we need to live within in our budget. So, total general fund revenue, we're looking at $2,945,000. The budget as proposed right now is out of balance by just over $157,000, and we gave the commission some options if they choose, a couple of options that, like Joe said, that's going to have to be decided at the public hearing before the budget's adopted. It's getting tougher and tougher to live with flat revenue and continue the level of service that we've, that we continue to provide. On the major street side, we have revenues in the amount of $380,150. Again, street fund money, pretty flat. We're not anticipating, the formula that's used for the city to receive money for the street funds is the gas and weight tax, 19 cents per gallon. It's been 19 cents per gallon for many, many years, and that's just not keeping up with inflation on the cost of maintaining our streets.
Governor Schneider has tried to get that increased, but so far, there's been no resolution in Lansing. They all indicate that they need to come up with more money for crumbling streets, but there's no new money coming.
The interesting, interesting article that the, more than 40% of residents in Michigan that were polled felt that a surplus should be used for streets, which is a pretty significant statement. They didn't say, "Give it back to me in the form of a tax rebate." They said, "Fix the streets." Don't know if anyone's listening, but you know, that's what was said.
So, the budget as proposed, a couple minor overlays that we're looking at, no new construction. We are looking at putting almost $20,000 into fund balance for the major street fund. Local street, we're looking at revenues in the amount of just over $223,000. Again, no major projects. Probably going to be doing some curb and gutter work in preparation for 2015 federal aid money to fix the end of Delta. So, that's some prep work there. On the local street side, we are proposing to take $26,000 out of fund balance to make our budget balance. That would, that would leave $72,000 in local street fund balance. And our, by after putting almost $20,000 into the major street funds, we would have $157,000 in fund balance, which we're probably going to be dipping into right now because of the winter we had. We're pretty much done with our budget for the year, and we have another month to go. So, we'll update the street fund, you know, all fund balances will be updated when we close our fiscal year, March 31st. Next, we have DDA. We are looking at, tax revenue for the DDA is around $250,000. So, we're planning to use some of fund balance to complete a couple of projects that they've kind of been on the table for a couple of years now, and we haven't been able to get them completed. One of them is a water main project. So, proposing revenue is of $423,000. And of that, we're planning to transfer $163,000 from fund balance, which would leave us just under $80,000 in the DDA fund as reserve. On the harbor fund, since we put in our new docks last year, we do have to go with the state rates for our docks now, and we, the tier that we chose, there is going to be an increase, a minor increase from last year, but last year was really the main jump when the state rates came into effect. But we are, our, the rate, the tier that we chose is less than neighboring communities that they, that they charge for their harbor, so... And we sent out our billing for this summer. If they want, we give, you know, first choice to the people that have had the docks, and their deposit is due next month. Next, we, well, can I just keep going? Because we moved solid waste to the next night, but it doesn't really matter. Solid waste fund, we are proposing a small increase on, this is billed in two different, two different sections on the utility bill. One is for composting and city cleanup and kind of a general, I think it was $4 per month. Proposing a small increase on that, and a small increase on the garbage and recycling pickup side, but the total bill would still only be $16. And at the budget hearing, we mentioned same service through a neighboring garbage pickup company was $28.50 per month, so still much less than our neighboring garbage hauling companies.
Commissioner Olson was here. He sat on a committee to determine whether we should stay in the business of picking up solid waste, and overwhelmingly, the cost would have been a lot more to contract it out, so... That's important.
In the electric department, we are proposing no rate adjustments. Pretty bare bones budget in the electric fund. Looking to put just over $250,000 into fund balance. One of the main topics, we talked about the electric fund, is how much cash is in there, and it's 2.5 million. And if we keep with our kind of standard that we've, we had, you know, 1.5 million is kind of our minimum that we want in there. So, we're doing, doing fine in the electric fund. Under wastewater, we are proposing a 25 cents per thousand gallon rate increase. Total revenue there, $936,170, and that would be taking $41,390 from fund balance to balance the budget. And on the water side, we are proposing also a 25 cents per thousand gallon rate increase. And that would be taking $25,980 from fund balance to make the water fund balance.
Water and wastewater's rate increases are mainly so that you can get ready to do some projects.
And still taking money from fund balance to balance the budget. And the equipment fund budget proposed is out of balance. Revenues are $338,000. Looking at taking almost $60,000 from fund balance, which would throw us in an even worse deficit by $33,000. So, that kind of spearheaded, you know, these additional meetings with our auditors on dissolving the equipment fund. So, I think we're going to proceed with that. As of 3/31/14, we'll dissolve the equipment fund, so this, this really won't be a fund next fiscal year. This activity will be transferred to the general fund where it can, and then managed through the general fund. Any questions?
I think it's a pretty good summary of what we discussed. Of course, we went into a lot greater detail at the budget hearings, but basically, what we discussed is where we were, where we figured we'd end up this year, revenues and expense-wise, where it would end up, where we'd leave our fund balance for each one of the operating companies that we operate, and the proposed revenues and expenses for next year, and where our fund balances would be next year if the budget comes in as expected. Of course, at this point of the year, it's more, it's not, it's some guesswork. It's an educated guess, but it's still guesswork, and we always have the option, not only the option, the obligation actually, to, to review our budget a lot through the year to make sure that we're staying on target. And so, there's no surprises at the end of the year. I was very happy at the budget hearing. I hope the rest of the commission was. I hope you heard that our staff does a lot of thinking about what we do, and that there's a certain level of stress because we're operating with a pretty small staff, and we have to. So, we're looking to set a public hearing for our next meeting for the budget.
I have a couple of questions.
Questions, okay.
With the rate increases, the small rate increases, are we still competitive with neighboring communities?
Yes. Yep. Every three years, the water, wastewater department does a rate study across the UP, and we are still about average amongst all the communities in the UP.
I look back at my, at my tax bill, and it looks like the city collected 13.7 mills.
13.5.
13.5. 13.5.
I was looking at 2012, because 13's at the accounts.
Okay.
Has that been any different? Have we...
When I worked, when I worked here, we used to levy 17 mills. I think at one point in time, we levied 18 mills, but that was before I was here.
Do we, do we start at the 13.7 by a statutory law of some sort?
The Headley Amendment. We can't go any higher than that without an election of the, of the citizens to levy a higher number. So, we're, that number is pegged at a certain amount, and it rolls back every year based on the growth, which we've had very little of, so it's gotten pretty flat-lined, but it can't increase. So, if we're looking, I guess the point of the question is if we're looking at levying more than 13.5 mills, we would have to go to a vote of the citizens.
When's the last time we did that?
Never.
We never have?
No.
We have never asked for additional millage to run the city?
No.
Is that highly unusual?
I think it's political reality.
No, I mean, someone said Eskenaba has 17 mills, so they're running with additional millage? That was voted?
I don't recall them ever...
Somebody else think Kingsford's running with 21 mills?
Well, the charter sets what each city can levy, and I don't recall Eskenaba ever having a rollover millage, a request for, for additional millage, but...
Who's charter?
Their charter.
City charter?
We operate on our charter, they operate on their charter. I don't recall them ever asking for additional millage over there.
So, their charter set their millage higher than ours?
No, ours is set, I think, at 17 or 18. I think it's 17. And we made a conscious decision years, quite a few years ago now, to roll back our millage when we created the solid waste fund, which coincidentally, the city manager over in Eskenaba advised us the other day that he would have liked to set up a solid waste fund over there and reduce their millage accordingly. And what I'm getting at behind that is that the millage used to pay for the garbage pickup, solid waste pickup. Now, the solid waste is its own operating fund, and it operates on a user fee, not on a tax. So, when we set up the solid waste fund, we said, "Okay, we're going to cut back the theoretical amount of millage," which was a mill and a half, "that was being levied for solid waste removal, and we're going to charge a fee instead." So, that's how the millage rate gradually came back, came down.
But a couple of years ago, we were at 15 and a half and then we chose not to levy that, that for solid waste, which brought us back to 13, 13 and a half.
So, we have a charge on the utility bill instead of the millage?
Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? Are we going to set a public hearing?
All, uh, all commissioners will be present on the 10th, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as we know right now.
Okay.
You're talking about March, right?
March 10.
I want to be gone the first meeting in April.
We have to adopt the budget by April 1st, right?
Yeah.
So, we'd like to adopt it on March 10th. I'm assuming we can adopt it on March 10th, but I suppose it's possible we might not be able to. And the reason behind that is because we could have some absences in the commission later in March and early in April, such as yourself, so.
I'd move to set it for our next meeting, March 10th. Set the public hearing to introduce the budget.
Motion by Commissioner Gay and supported by Commissioner Nemeczek to set a public hearing for the fiscal year 2014, 2015 budget for our next regular meeting on March 10th. All those in favor of that motion signify by seeing aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carried. Next item is border review appointments. By the way, if anybody knows anybody who'd like to be a border review member, it's not really a hard job. It's a long day, but it's not a hard job. We really need some people to serve on the border view. I haven't been able to surface any names yet. So, we do have a, an appointment as an alternate for Ms. Henrietta Miller, who's been on the border view long before I was around here. I know that. And, uh, do we need the permission, do we need a motion from the commission on it? Yes, we need a motion from the commission.
I make a motion to appoint Henrietta Miller to the board review with the expiration of May 1st, 2015.
Support. Motion by Commissioner Boswick, supported by Commissioner Gay to appoint Henrietta Miller to the border review. Term expires May 1, 2015. And all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion is carried. Next item is myself, I guess. Developmental disability, developmental disabilities awareness month proclamation. The description is the Delta Regional Inclusive Community Coalition, RICC for short, is requesting March 2014 be declared as developmental disabilities awareness month in the city of Gladstone. So, we have a proclamation that I will be reading. It's proclamation for developmental disabilities awareness month, March 2014. Whereas nationwide, approximately 57 million people have a disability, of those approximately 180,000 people in Michigan have a developmental disability. Whereas city of Gladstone's residents with and without disabilities work together, play together, worship together, learn together and grow together. And whereas families of people with developmental disabilities deserve our admiration and recognition of their caring commitment and ongoing support that are both essential to an independent and productive life and whereas developmental disabilities awareness month is an appropriate time to recognize the city of Gladstone's accomplishments concerning persons with disabilities and to also identify the improvements that are needed to fully include all of the city of Gladstone residents with developmental disabilities. And whereas celebrating the abilities and contributions of people with developmental disabilities can only serve to enrich our community and enhance our diversity. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Joseph Helmack, mayor of the city of Gladstone, do hereby proclaim March 2014 as developmental disabilities awareness month. Followed by a letter from Bonnie Champeau, the co-chair of the Delta Regional Inclusive Community Coalition, which is asking us to take that action. And our contact person is one of our employee's wives, Brenda Crowe. So, did we get a motion to adopt that?
So, move.
Support. Move by Commissioner Gay, supported by Commissioner Nemeczek to declare March 2014 as developmental disabilities awareness month in the city of Gladstone. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All those opposed, that motion is carried. And the final item of our new business is to award non-motorized trail based on statement of qualifications. That would be the proposed walking trail, uh, starting way down on Lakeshore Drive, uh, near the armory, following along behind the existing guardrail along US 2 and 41, M-35 as far as where you would turn off the highway to go towards the terrace, which is P Point Five Road. And we have statement of qualifications for UP engineers and architects, which has already done a lot of work to help us out on this project. I've attended one meeting where the stakeholders were present to discuss some of the proposed items that are going to have to be looked at in construction. I think this is a wonderful project and I hope we get this done soon so that we can go up north Lakeshore Drive as well with the project, which the Parks and Recreation Department loves to hear me say that because they already have enough on their plate, but I'm going to keep saying it, so. That's kind of the background. I think this is a great project, obviously. I go to most of the Parks and Recreation Board meetings and they're really the people who came up with that project. Caroline Weber Kennedy, who's also our MML representative and who happens to live in our community, has done a lot of footwork on this project. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Darla?
Well, two of the grants, we plan to seek three grants to accomplish this trail. And two of the grants are kind of under the MDOT umbrella. And when you receive MDOT grants, um, we, we can't just award a contract to any engineering company. So, we had, that's why we had to receive a statement of qualifications. UPEA did the feasibility study for this trail and, and according to their plan that they presented, I think they're more than qualified to, um, help the city through these, this grant process and get this trail put in. So, I recommend we award UPEA to help us continue with this non-motorized trail.
Questions?
Money-wise, are there limitations or do you?
Money?
Do they charge so much an hour or how does, how does, how does the billing go?
The feasibility study identified the total project is roughly 1.8 million dollars. And in that 1.8 million is $20,000 for engineering and fees for UPEA to do the work that we're asking.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone else who's qualified that would be more local?
Nobody else applied, so.
Oh, okay. I will move that we, uh, that we award the, uh, the project through DDA.
Support. Move by Commissioner Nemeczek, supported by Commissioner Gay to award the non-motorized trail based on statement of qualifications to UP engineers and architects. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, that motion is carried. We have one other item, which is executive session to discuss the attorney opinion letter and ongoing union negotiations. I think we'll hold off on that till we get the reports done, starting with the city manager's report.
Just an update on the water and wastewater freeze-ups. We are up to 120 in the city of Gladstone and we have 66 residents right now on a let-run status where they have to keep their water at least to a thickness of a pencil lead drip.
My old home in the Buckeyes, one of them.
We have three, three on the list for tomorrow, so we are not behind. Thank you. Don't want to be behind, but, um, as the calls come in, we put them on the list and we get to them as soon as we can.
So, Darla, what's the, if someone has frozen pipes and that, what's, what do they have to do?
They need to call the water department. 428-3460. Leave a message. There's not going to be anybody at the plant. They're all out working, but every half hour, somebody stops back and checks the messages and, and gets back to the people.
And then the ones that do have to have the let-run, they're not getting billed for the water, are they?
Correct. We, we, um, we have all those accounts identified and they will be charged their average water use, not the actual water that's going through their meter.
And they told me it could be May before all the frosts is out of the ground.
So, even if.
I said maybe April 1st and they said, no, more like May.
If the temperature warms up to 30 and it's nice and sunny and you think, oh, the water's not going to freeze again, if you're on a let-run, you need to let it run until we call you and say, okay, you can turn your water off now.
Oh, yeah.
So, very important. Um, I'm happy to announce that we hired a special event coordinator. Her name is Amber Hanson. She starts tomorrow. Looking forward to meeting, I've had a couple of meetings with her already, but she officially starts tomorrow. And, um, at 1 o'clock and at 2 o'clock, she's going to attend her first, 4th of July planning meeting. So, that's one of the major events we have in Gladstone here. And, um, just looking forward to having her help us with many more events come to Gladstone. This, tomorrow night and Thursday night this week, I will be helping, uh, United Way. They, they create a panel that determines, um, people apply to United Way service organizations for funding through United Way. And I'll be sitting down with several other folks and going through 13 applications and helping them decide how much to fund each applicant. So, this will be my third year helping United Way do that. Um, like I said, Tuesday, we're going to have our first 4th of July planning meeting. And Thursday morning, I will be in Marquette attending a MERS, our defined benefit retirement system. They come to the UP, I think quarterly. So, this is the next meeting that they're holding in the UP. Chris DeRose is the CEO of MERS and we tell him our concerns and he tells us his plan and hopefully we're all on the same page. So, we'll find out on Thursday. And we have Friday morning, continuing Teamsters union negotiations. That's all I have.
Very good. City commission and committee reports and board and commission reports. I am a member of the DDA, so I attend all of their meetings. I think it's wonderful that they've hired a, a new person to take charge on some of the things that our staff doesn't have time to do. The DDA is funding that position, so they have, they have the ability, I've set it up a bunch of times, they have the ability to do the marketing that we can't do in our operating budgets because it's just, there's no budget room to do it. I also attend the EDC meetings. Commissioner Nemeczek has been at some of those. EDC, we're trying to revitalize and get them a new mission since they became a loan review board. I also attended the joint government meeting. And I generally try and make Parks and Recreation Board meetings, but I don't think I'm going to be able to make the next one in March. So, if someone else could attend that meeting, that would be a good thing. That is on March 4th at 6:30 PM. Hint, hint. There you go.
What day of the week is that?
It might be a Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Yep, they're Tuesdays. They're a good group of people. Anything else from the boards and committees?
At the electric department? Off the shirt?
Uh, yeah, they're usually across the alley in the electric department. Yep. Okay, hearing nothing else, we'll go back to public comment. Is there any public comment? Hearing none. City commissioner comments? Commissioner Nemeczek?
I haven't been through the public hearing of the, I went to the workshops, obviously, for the budget. Uh, does anybody usually show up?
For the public hearing?
Not many.
Not many? Anybody? No? Just wondering.
Elsa, yeah.
Ah, Elsa. Always welcome.
Oh, sorry. She's on vacation, I mean. She's back.
That's all.
Commissioner Boswick?
Uh, I guess on Wednesday, I'm going to get a tour of the Delta County JL to see what work actually needs to be.
I'm going to go Wednesday also. It's at 3 o'clock, isn't it?
3 o'clock, yeah. Okay. So, looking forward to seeing what kind of work they need done there.
I think I told you guys, I went on the tour last week and I know the sheriff quite well. He was our program at our Lions Club meeting on Thursday night there and after the tour, a reporter stuck a camera in my face and a, and a microphone and said, so what did you think? And I says, the first word that came out of my mouth was deplorable. And the commissioner reminded the Lions Club members that I said that. And that was my honest assessment. So, you lie, your eyes will be opened. It's, it's a bad situation. Commissioner Gay?
Uh, I just wanted to commend staff for dealing with this harsh weather and the, you know, specifically, I know we're dealing with some, a lot of freeze-ups and some, uh, some residents that are having difficulty as a result of it. Staff's been doing a very good job of being responsive to, uh, to all of the issues from snow removal to frozen water lines and sewer lines, et cetera. So, just wanted to give kudos to staff on that. That's all I have.
Yeah, I wanted to touch on that as well. I've been getting a lot of comments and complaints, frankly, complaints from the public about, I, I think I would, I would say that they're probably related to, that winter is starting to stress people out. I've asked for people to be patient. I understand that snow removal is not what they would normally would expect snow removal to be. Uh, when I was just coming into this meeting, I took a trip down Delta Avenue because I had gotten a complaint on Delta Avenue and the Jet Vector truck was just coming in for the night. I know the electric department guys have been working buckets of overtime. It was, that's really stressing them out as well. And there's lots of water services there that are frozen. I stopped and talked with the guys the other day on a sewer lateral that was frozen, which technically wasn't their job to take care of because city policy says that the lateral is responsible to the property owner. They were, however, trying to help out the property owner. Um, it appears as though they're having to go faster and faster to get snow over pretty tall snowbanks and, uh, it'd be nice if winter got over real soon, but it doesn't look like there's any relief in sight according to the weather report tonight, so. Hopefully, everybody will develop patience and we won't have too many arguments. Placemaking is key to fixing Michigan's broken municipal finances and the state league, the municipal league is pushing really hard for that. And I think that's something that, when I keep talking about the DDA having the ability to market the community, I would hope that the DDA is, is the entity we can use to try and catch up with some of the growth. You heard the city manager say our biggest problem is we, we don't have any growth in the tax base, which is what the general fund relies on. And so, I'd like to use the DDA for more and more of those kind of things. The DDA has already taken on a lot of projects that we wouldn't be able to accomplish if we didn't have a DDA, so I thank those people. Had a nice conversation with our county representative, Ann Yosma Miller, who was new to the county board and we talked about, um, some of the situations that are happening over there and, and her role as, as trying to bring some people to the table to talk to each other, who probably aren't used to doing that. Um, in fact, the sheriff vacated his office for us. Uh, I've been asked to participate in Delta Force Government Day. Quite often, we see people here at our meeting who are participating in Delta Force. When I was here and Darla worked for me, I sent her to Delta Force. Kim, I believe, is a graduate of Delta Force. You have a list of questions. Why did you decide to run for office? What surprised you the most about your position? What would you like the public to understand about government? What has been your biggest challenge? What has been the most rewarding aspect? And can you give us a brief biography? And guess who's one of the facilitators? Former Commissioner Craig Lorman. Right? Him and I'll have fun at that.
I, I normally attend that and I, since I'll be in.
So, you stick them on me.
Marquette on Thursday.
Okay.
Sorry.
Uh, Darla touched on, we've been, we've had two negotiating sessions with the Teamsters and we got another one this Friday. Uh, we've been very cordial. When I first got elected, the employees basically told me, they said, close your ears, Terry. You guys will sit down across the table from us and don't bring the attorneys in, we will sit down and negotiate contracts. So, I've tried to remember that. It's not an easy time to be negotiating contracts. I think Commissioner Gay would echo that. Commissioner Gay, I had said I was going to invite you to a meeting with the volunteer firefighters. That would be 6:30 on March 3rd, 6:30 PM if you're available.
Okay.
Of course, the other commissioners are welcome as well. The volunteer firemen tell me that the commission has been conspicuously absent from their meetings. Our director is there, which is, I think, over and above. So, thank you for going, but, um, I told them all, you know, bring your tough questions. I know all those volunteer firemen and they're not afraid to tell me what they really think. Uh, however, there's a question for the city clerk. If we get more than two commissioners there, we have to post that as an open meeting. Is that correct?
There's going to be more than three. I would prefer to post it and then. I would prefer to post it and then, you know, that way you're covered.
So if you'd like to come along, we have to tell Kim that we would all be present. We're not conducting public business, but just to be on the safe side.
No, but, yeah. It's easy enough to post and cover it.
I have no plans to go.
Okay.
I'm going to the one that's calling tonight.
Jay?
No, I have no plans.
I think I forwarded emails to you guys from Logan Schupp, the young man who wants to come and work on our locomotive. Kim has been keeping him in the loop. Thank you, Kim, our city clerk. That's pretty much it on those items. Before we go, before we decide we're going to go into executive session or not, we're going to ask the city clerk for any comments.
Thank you. I'd just like to encourage people...
You figure you're going to catch me on that, don't you?
No, but not again. It's new to the agenda, so I get it. Encourage people to consider volunteering for boards and commissions. Sometimes it is very hard to get people to do it. We're looking to fill two vacancies on the board review, which is a required thing that they have to do, the March and the July board reviews. And it is one out of the two boards that you do get paid. So the rest are volunteer completely, but board review is a paid stipend with that. So just trying to encourage people to consider it.
Are there credentials for that?
Excuse me?
Any credentials for that?
You have to be a city resident. And then there is training.
So the assessor will train you?
Yes.
And there's also training opportunities through the municipal league?
Right, which was very good. We have sent a couple of our board members that are currently on it and interested in it. So, you know, you kind of get trained on the job and then there is additional training to go to. But if you're interested, just let me know. Give me a call, stop in. I'm really trying.
We could use the help.
Yeah. Any of the positions, you know, at different times, we're pretty good on some of the other boards, but at any time. So if there's a board you're really interested in, you can fill out an application and we hold it till there's a vacancy or something. But right now, I've got nobody in the folder for anything, you know, any place, so just trying to encourage people. Get involved, please. That's it. That's my plug.
We have an attorney's letter that we have to go into executive session. We have the right, anybody's going to executive session in insensitive matters, so we are going to go into executive session with our attorney who's present tonight. We need to have a motion to do that.
So move. Support.
Specifically, you indicate it's considered a written amendment to council and...
So I said.
And pending collective bargaining.
So I said. Can you hear me?
It has to be here.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Gay, supported by Commissioner Nemec, to go into executive session. That's got to be a roll call vote, correct?
Commissioner Nemec?
Yes.
Commissioner Boswick?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mattin is absent and Mayor Mackey.
Yes. We are going into executive session. If you'd like to wait for us.